Good evening. Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting of August 23, 2021. This meeting is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement of notice of publication?
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on August 18, 2021, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Council President Siola?
Here.
Councilman Gindi?
Here.
Councilman Gurtzinski?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. We have no proclamations, honors, or presentations. However, we are going into executive session as this involves a professional. In order to save the town money, we will do the executive session at this time. We will adjourn here and go into the prosecutor's room. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 2021-222, resolution authorizing the entrance into the executive session. May I have a motion?
Make a motion, Chip.
Motion has been made by Mr. Siola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas? Council President Siola?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gurtzinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Okay. Ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to go back into open?
Motion to go into open?
Motion has been made by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gurtzinski. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Moving on the agenda to Agenda Session at the Brian Sicknick Memorial Gardens. Councilwoman Mira?
So I have made contact with a teacher who's assisting National Honor Society students. She said that there's a variety of them who have some ideas and plans for what they need to do to show leadership for the National Honor Society. And one student in particular had already chosen what she wanted to do. So she wrote out her proposal, and I'm bringing it to you guys today just to have discussion. If you've read it, she's looking for a location or more than one location to be able to do these memorial gardens. So just your thoughts on it so I can reach back out to her and her sister. So what do you guys think?
I've also spoken to the teacher. And of course, you know that they've been in contact with the family. Of course, the question that has been asked is, okay, once it's built, who will take care of it afterwards? And that has been said that the National Honor Society is the answer that you got also, that they would continue to take care of it in perpetual. It would not cost the borough anything. And I think it would be a very nice thing to do for Brian Sicknick. So that's at least my opinion there.
Any thoughts on Witch Park? Or what you guys believe is a good place for it?
That's Cannon Park.
Which one?
Cannon.
Cannon Park. Which is a dedication to veterans, anyway.
I also thought of Volunteer's Park, maybe.
That's the one at the end of...
Johnson Place?
Yeah.
That has like five different names. It's had five different names over the last 50 years.
Varga, please.
You said Cannon was dedicated to veterans?
Well, it's dedicated to the Cannon...
Cannon Brothers.
Right, yes.
Was a veteran, so that... A veteran, I mean, that's a nice place there for it.
Julie, let's get deadline. We're ready, we'll kind of do this.
Well, I'm sure she wants to get things rolling, so... She just needs the okay which locations we will approve.
Why don't they come up with a plan? I mean, because we've given you some ideas.
Look on the back. They have a donation.
I know, but is that all that they're looking for? Is the spot?
Yeah, right. At the moment, yeah. She's got everything laid out. If you read your packet there.
It's on the back, or whatever.
And the rendering is Varga Park, right? That they have Pacers or...
She took pictures, yeah. She took pictures of certain locations. She just wants, I guess, our input on what we'll allow.
Cannon Park would be a good proposal because it is already a memorial area. Had to consolidate it there.
And I think on there, I think she's looking for two locations to make more than one, right?
Well, she says if there's not... If there is, if it's possible, they would like to have two. I personally, I think one nice one?
Yeah, so I agree with.
Should we also ask if they want to ask the family which one they prefer?
I think the teacher knows the family, so I think they'll ask there. So two suggestions, Cannon Park, Volunteer Park?
Personally, I like Volunteer Park. That's a big attraction in town now. You know, we got the new playground equipment. We have the walking path around.
That's Varga.
Oh, Varga Park. I would say I would like Varga. And that's where the renderings are, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think so.
Then we offer them three, three choices.
That's fine.
So we go from Cannon Park, Varga Park, and Volunteer Park. Do you want to pick one?
All right. And then I just, no, I don't know if the teacher had spoken to you as well, Mayor, but I think another student will try to lead a community cleanup?
Yes. She didn't have any details about that, but yes, that was a suggestion also. And yes, that would be no problem.
I figure with, we have a community grant that we get supplies for, am I correct, Adriana? So should I ask when they decide if they can reach out to Donna?
Yes, if he wants to go ahead with it, the young man wants to go ahead with it, yes. We could do two things.
Okay. And that's all I have for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving on with the agenda. We have a second reading, public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Resolus... I'm sorry. Ordinance 2021-13, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 350 entitled "Zoning."
Make a motion to waive the full reading?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Siola to waive the full reading, seconded by Mr. Gurtzinski. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. You may come forward. Please give your name and address. And you may ask any questions or make any comments concerning same.
Richard Byrne, 11 Basset Place. A member of the planning board, but not speaking on his behalf. Speaking on his behalf. You received our recommendation that this ordinance be adopted and that the PEP section in the code be eliminated. Back in 2018, I raised concerns as this PEP program was being adopted that the $3,600 didn't seem to be in the neighborhood of what the capital cost of developing a parking space would be. And I believe it was Mr. Howson who explained that the $3,600 was chosen as being 20 years of a usable parking permit fee. So, and, you know, at the time, I said that I thought it'd be a better idea to actually come up with a plan to develop new parking in the borough. And then at that time, you could set up the PEP ordinance to decide how, what fraction, portion of the capital cost should be the PEP fee. So I do. I support the repeal of this ordinance at this time and look forward at some point to having a plan for new parking that we could move forward with the PEP program.
If it had only been listened to. Anyone else? On first call, second call, third call? Yep, yes, sir. Nope, hold on. Somebody wishes to, come.
There's not any ordinance over there. You're speaking on your thing?
Yeah.
No, no, not this line.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The only ordinance, okay. Anyone else? On first call, second call, third call? Motion has been made to close by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gurtzinski. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Make the ordinance?
Motion has been made by Mr. Siola to move the ordinance, seconded by Mr. Gurtzinski. Discussion?
I have some questions. So what came about repealing this now? Or who brought up for this ordinance to be repealed?
There are several different projects that are planned in South River in which parking is going... That they don't have enough parking. And the thought is, hey, there's an ordinance. We'll pay you $3,500 and we'll buy as many parking places as we need.
Okay.
Where are they going to park?
Okay. Has anybody thought about why this came up to begin with in 2018 when it did go to the planning board? I had originally thought that those... In 2018, those projects had taken advantage of the PEP program. That's why I asked Mr. Zanga at the previous meeting that this was discussed. So the issue was that permits were being purchased and that we were overselling the existing parking lot, correct? So the PEP program came about to start the plan of what we would do because we have already been saying that we were overselling the parking lot. So what is the plan? We're just going to repeal this. What is the plan?
I believe the plan was to put that into an account to purchase property inevitably.
No, correct, correct. But what is the plan now that you are repealing this? Because we have already decided on a revitalization... A revitalization plan for Main Street, all right? You have already told people and developers that this is what we want in our downtown. And now we're going to tell them that parking doesn't... Like, we don't have a solution for their parking, so they just won't be able to do what they want? So what was the point of our revitalization plan, revitalization plan for Main Street to now have this blocking the development that we're looking for? I thought the PEP program was for that. Because at the moment, at that time in 2018, I went back to the minutes on the planning board because I was on the planning board at that time. And we had concerns of people who wanted us to buy the empty lot next to the... Our parking area on Obridge Street. Now it's my understanding that there is people looking to be able to do projects and give that portion to the town to be able to do parking. But that still doesn't resolve our issue with future projects that come into town. So you're going to repeal this, I understand. But what is the solution? Because you're telling people that you want development, but you're not going to allow them to do it. So in my opinion, the PEP program gave us one step towards a solution to be able to build something or alleviate the parking in town. Now you're going to repeal it, and we're not giving them an answer as to what do they do next. We know Main Street doesn't have where you can build and put parking on any of those locations. And you passed a revitalization downtown area that allows them to develop that way. So where's the misconnection here? If you're going to repeal this because you're worried about the development that's coming, where's your solution? Because now you're just telling people we don't want development in town.
No, we want development, but the thing is too, some of the projects may have to be downsized to accommodate for parking because there just isn't space available.
These projects are going to the planning board, right?
Planning board has just said to us that they're all in favor to repeal this. We have a letter here from their attorney saying to repeal this. And if you want a plan, that's what a planner is for a developer. And let the developer come to us with a plan on what to do for parking.
But the town gave...
Excuse me.
A revitalization plan for what they want.
And we're going to revitalize the town.
So how are you going to do that if you're telling people, oh, well, you don't have parking, so don't even think about it?
Nobody's saying that.
So what are they going to do?
A planner is going to give us ideas and give us suggestions and solutions to the parking. Plain and simple. So why are you going to make a guy come in who's going to build something and make him pay extra money for parking places that are not there and won't be there?
To make one step so that we can start our plan of being able to have more parking.
And where are you going to put this parking? Do you have an idea where you're going to put it? So you're going to take this money, you're going to take this money and put it into a borough account.
So now you're not going to take any money. So what are you going to do?
Where are you going to put the parking? Where are you going to put it? Do you have an idea?
So where, what are you going to do?
Let the planner make the suggestions and the solutions to the parking.
The planner, our borough planner?
No, no, not our borough planner. The developer planners.
Our borough planner was the one who helped in.
Well, did you just see you were on the planning board?
Coming up with the PEP program.
You were on the planning board. The planning board now says it should be repealed because there are developers out there that can make solutions, suggestions, and build something for parking. So why are you going against the development? Why are you going against the revitalization? You're going against it.
Because you're just going to make private parking.
No, you're not.
You're just... So you're going to ask a developer to find private parking for the solutions for their stuff?
It's not private parking. It's going to be parking for their development.
This is just going to be one more barricade for developers.
How much money has been received from the PEP program to date? I know...
Nothing, zero.
That was the thing. When this PEP program came about, I had, I reached out to Mr. Zanga because I had initially thought that at least two of those projects ended up going with it. But they ended up buying in perpetuity parking in the borough lot in perpetuity, okay? But the issue we were having at that moment was they said we oversold the spots there. So the solution was this PEP program to be able to build capital to be able to get more parking, to find more solutions, to do...
How many years do we have to collect?
Let her finish, please.
But now we don't have... Now we're going to repeal it. So if you don't have any solution, I just think this is another step in blocking developers and improving our Main Street.
Julie, you're wrong. If you know anything about a contractor...
Mr. Gindi?
Sorry, I cut it. If you know anything about a contractor, what happens is when a contractor wants to come before the planning board or for that matter, the sign board, what they do is they present their plans. Before they even walk in there, they have what you call a TRC meeting. And what happens is you have professionals sitting at the TRC meeting that actually explains to him what we're looking for. So that planner or that contractor realize or knows that there's things that is before him, so he has to accommodate to actually suit what the town would be looking for. So let's just say this was not going to take off. Let's just say. So what happens now? You've got a guy that comes there and says, you know what? I'm just going to pay $3,500. Bam, I got my parking lot. The planner, our professionals, can't even fight it because it's in play. The problem is, we don't even have the actual parking. So it's easier for me, or for that matter, for the town to go to the contractor that wants to come before the town and makes up for a better place and present us with an actual plan that they want to see the town look like. Perfect example is PNC. So he's a guy that wants to come and do something that personally I think is beautiful. So he knows that he has a plan in his head, but he also knows he has a requirement. His requirement happens to be X amount of parking spots. So for him to accommodate that, guess what he has to do? He's still going to go forward with his plan, but now he has to cut back on, for example, his units. The plan still will take off, but now he just has to cut back on the units. Nothing changed, exception of he's now going by the rules of our town, the rules of our planner and our engineer. That's exactly what it is. It's more like saying, hey, listen, we're going to give you the option of cheating the system. It's pretty much what we're doing in the last past, whatever, two or three years. Today, we're saying, no. Present us with something that's logical, something that's going to really suit our town. That's all we're doing, Julie.
Councilman Gindi? Now, question for you. Will this deter builders, though, from...
Absolutely not. We already have three projects on the plate, and they're not even bothered by it at all. And they're huge projects. We're not talking about small building here and there. We're talking about a huge project that are coming before us. And no, it did not bother them at all. They, to tell you the truth, they didn't even know about it. They knew that they had to do X amount of parking spots and they had to accommodate. So what they did, for example, was the PNC. For example, they had to cut back. So instead of X amount of units, now he has a little bit less. But now he's doing what's right for the town. So if it does take off, guess what? His plan is in place. All it takes is the board just to simply say yes. But yes, we have quite a few plans. I don't even know who is calling, talking to me right now.
Okay. Anyone else? All right.
I would like to say just my last words. Not every location on Main Street is like PNC. Not every location has a parking lot connected to it. A lot of our locations could look and be better, and this is just going to be another block in any type of development because PNC, okay, is an exception. Bank of America is an exception. But not every location on Main Street where we have this revitalization plan that we've given to the people of South River of what we're looking for is going to have that solution. There's always going to be the parking issue. And as a town, we should be conquering the issues with parking, not just telling developers, well, you figure it out because then we're going to have parking lots in every other corner. Where does that make sense? This should be an issue.
Main Street right now has four major projects happening, and they were not, at least they're bothered by it. And they're going to look beautiful. Matter of fact, the planning board just at the last meeting approved one of them. On Whitehead, which we forgot to mention that, has three projects going on, and they're coming for the zoning. So yes, they have a pretty good idea of what they have to do to make it right for our town as well as parking. So I understand where you're coming from. I respect you for what you're doing, but... Listen, contractors are contractors. They have to adapt to what the town provides. It's just like New Brunswick, perfect example. What did New Brunswick do? They built all these high rises, and they put the parking underneath the buildings. Pretty good idea, I thought. But anyway, I know what you're saying, Julie. I got it. But this is where my opinion is.
Then I will have the last word. I did not like this ordinance when it was passed. There are two things that are wrong with it. First, the amount that is put out there. $3,500 is ridiculously low. Woodbridge has $25,000. Somebody who would need 30 parking places under this ordinance would pay a whole $105,000. Under $25,000, it would be $75,000. Excuse me, $750,000. That's real money. That's worthwhile doing it. That's the first thing wrong with this. The second thing wrong with it is it's the cart before the horse. These types of ordinances work when you have a place to park, when you can offer parking. Otherwise, people will simply go pass, you know, say, here's the money. Even at $25,000, fine, but the people don't have any place to park. So it is being mulled just talking about it, that perhaps a parking deck may be necessary for South River. Where the Obridge Street lot is, maybe there. It's an idea. It would have to take several developers to do it. The town may have to contribute to it. The town may have to contribute to it, but we're going to have to think out of the box and live dangerously to get out there and do something about the parking. There's no more land to buy. So that's the question. That's the point. So yes, you could say, well, what about? Well, if you've got a solution, by all means, let's hear the solution. But having a bad solution is worse than not having any, and this was a bad solution. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
No.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-14, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas, to waive the full reading. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. For your comments or questions, please give your name and address on first call, second call, third call.
Motion to close?
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Gorchinsky.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Who's the ordinance?
Ordinance has been moved by Councilwoman Ballas.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gorchinsky. Discussion?
Just mayor, real quick, just to let everybody know that this ordinance is for a four-way stop sign on the corners of David and Morningside. This school, Corpus Christi School, is now reopening again as a St. Mark's Charter School. So with the traffic now coming from the high school and from the primary school, the chief has recommended that we put a four-way stop there. So this is the ordinance that's covering a four-way stop sign now on David and Morningside.
I believe it's South River's very first four-way stop.
Yeah, I believe it is. There are.
We've got assurances from the chief, too. There will be markings on the road. There will be warnings ahead of time, because I live up there, and I know I'm going to go, ooh, that stop sign is there now, I have to remember. But there will be markings on the road and four warnings and everything, so just people be aware of that.
There is a four-way at Wright, Ziggert, and Daley. There is one in the town. Is there? Yes.
Wright, Ziggert.
Daley. Zigzag.
Zigzag. Okay. Well, it'll be our second one. Okay, so everybody's used to it, okay. Anything else? No? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Ordinance has been adopted. We have ordinance, first reading by title only, 2021-15. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Mayor, I'd like to move that the council pass ordinance...
How about we waive the full reading?
No.
No, this is the first reading. That's right. I'm sorry. I'm looking at it. We got police...
I'd like to make a move that the council pass ordinance 2021-15 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on September the 13th by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
We're having fire alarm calls. That's what's confusing here. Okay, moving on with the agenda to our reports, as we traditionally begin, and he's been patiently waiting, Mr. Koch.
Good evening, everybody. So with current report, the 2020-2021 road projects with the curb and sidewalks, we had intended to pick a bid date around August 16th, but the DOT had requested some minor revisions. We've made those, we've resubmitted, and I'm hoping this week or next week, the latest, that we will pick a bid date and put that project out to bid. The 2022 local aid program that was previously submitted, and I'm hoping, generally in October or November, we will hear. Electrical substation maintenance work is done at this time, except for the new cables and sweeps, which, as my report indicates, will be done in the fall when electric usage is down. Well number two replacement, they, my last report said they were starting water line work or would be. It's so tough out there right now that the pipe they had on reserve, when they went to get it, was sold. So it's, and I have another contractor who can't find concrete pipe. It's just, not on any of your jobs, but I'm just indicating that it's, it's just the way it's going out there now, so the demand is so high and the production less. So well number two, they thought, they think they had another. When I talked to the guys about it, they thought they had more pipes secured and were going to go get it more promptly, and so that is why there's a change in my report that kind of goes backwards. Righty? I just rely on what the guys tell me, and then these things happen. Safe routes to schools, that deadline is still October 14th, and Councilwoman, Mayor and I will keep in touch on it if something comes up. Getting back to the last meeting of my update, Julie, I think you had asked me about the discharge into what we think was the Willow Lake Ditch?
Yes.
And I checked, and they did, in fact, rather than discharge over land, they did discharge. It was groundwater being pumped by the well as part of the exercising of the well and making sure that it was functioning properly. So that, I'm told, was, in fact, the case.
Okay.
And then, you're welcome. And then you also asked me about Prentice Avenue. I did research my files. It had come up in January of 19. In February, I submitted a proposal and a cost estimate for the work, but it didn't really have a paper trail. I couldn't find a paper trail after that. I mean, obviously, COVID interrupted some things, but I, you had asked me if I could find anything that kind of explained why it, if you will, fell off the radar, perhaps, but I really didn't have anything in writing that spoke to that.
Just the proposal, though.
Yeah, I did.
You had come up with the proposal for that issue.
I, yes, I did that. I have a little, in fact, I can give this to you if you want, I think, but I have, so in, on January 27th, the borough received a complaint from a guy who works in our office about the problem. So, and then Mr. Landenski, on January 28th, asked me to look into it, and on February 6th, we had looked at it. By February 6th, we had looked at it, worked up a cost estimate, and issued that to the borough. But that's really where my paper trail ends on it.
What was the cost estimate for that?
The cost estimate for that was $196,000. At that time, $196,493. And I say it that way because, as we were discussing a few minutes ago, prices are going up and such, so, and it outlined the work that would be included in, you know, which included, the primary problem that we found was the sump pumps discharging, and, you know, if they start flowing, they freeze in the cold weather, and then the ice just continues to build.
And that's the Prentice...
Yeah, Chesky.
It is now working my way down me, because I got the same thing, and I met a resident there, and it was, as it rained, at the time, it wasn't raining, and there was a huge puddle of water.
Yeah, I have pictures even of the icing, and so I don't question the validity of the complaint at all. I was just trying to bring, get back and explain, yeah, some pretty horrendous icing pictures there, but just to give you a response to that. And Councilman Olivera, we had spoken a little bit about lead joints and the new water rule. So I did a little checking into it, and let's say we're doing a water line project or doing something, we come across either a lead service, I believe, a bronze service, or brass, rather, a brass service, which I'm told can have lead in it, or a galvanized service. The borough is, is, I don't want to say obligated, but should make every effort to replace the service from the main to the house. I asked the person I was dealing with, who's a licensed water operator, I said, what if there's a porch in the way or whatever? They said, every effort possible. So I hope that's a little more information for you on that, in terms of what we run into there.
And now, there's, the state is now, from what I've read, and I may be mistaken, there's grant money with this, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
I think my underst, well, I won't say no, but I will say, if you, for instance, I was working on another project, another town that had the I-Bank funding, and they made it very clear that if you run into this, just do that work all the way to the home, and they will finance it. Whether that's grant money or not, I don't think so. There is sometimes some forgiveness on those, but that is something that, like, a field change like that is, no question, just do it. There may be other money, and I'm not aware of it.
Governor Murphy signed the bill, if I'm not mistaken, correct? And it gave us, what, 10 years to come up with a plan, or, if I'm not mistaken? Does anyone recall?
I don't know so much as 10-year plan, but I know there was money out there to it.
I don't, I'm not aware of that, but I can check with the guys in the Water Division about money for it, and see if they're familiar with any...
Back and forward the legislation.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. And then I'll show it to the gentlemen who do water work all year long for us. That's their department, and I'll see what they know about any particular funding to support that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Koch.
I think that's, that answers the questions that I was asked. And if there's any other questions, I'll try and answer them now, and if not, I'll get back to you with answers.
Anyone else?
I have one quick question, Bruce. I know there's a process with our DOT money and being able to get it and then start the project. Why is it that we always start so late with our DOT projects? Is it because we have to wait a certain time?
No, you don't have to wait a certain time, but I don't want to speak for finance, but generally, you get the grant, and then you have to put financing in place before you're in a position to authorize us or whomever in any town to do the design work. Then the design work has to be done, and then you have to submit to the DOT for a minimum, for a maximum of 30 days, but we, for instance, on our project, we called them late last week, and they said, yeah, we, you sent it to us on this date, but we got it on this date, and we have 30 days from there. So we have three more days to respond to you. Third day, three days later, they sent us some comments. So quickly turn around those comments, submit it back to them, and then wait for them to tell us those comments are okay. So there's a month and a half in the process, just there alone, not considering the other things that it takes to get to that point.
I'm only asking, because I feel like we start so, like, we start right now talking about next year's money, and I feel like it takes so long from the time that, you know, to actually put it out to bid, to actually have the project started, because then we get into the fall when it's cold and rainy, and I feel like it creates so much more problems.
Not that I'm defending anybody, but that's why the towns get up to two years to implement a project. And you may recall, a couple of years ago, they were making announcements in the spring or even in June, and that, the budgets were, you know, the budgets were already put together in many towns that adopted them by then, so now that throws you off. Then they backed it up again to the old October, November timeframe. So at least once you get that, and then the first of the year comes, you are in a better position as the governing body to say, okay, we've got this project, this grant money, we have to finance it in order to get something moving forward on it. So your observation is correct. It's not just here.
Okay.
It's part of the whole process, it seems.
Okay.
All righty?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Koch. Mr. Zanga?
Mayor, there's a couple of resolutions, starting with 237, 238, 239, and 240. This is a purchase of lawn mowers, purchase of tree pickup trucks, purchase of a tandem dump truck, and a purchase of sanitation trucks. This is all against the bond ordinance that was adopted on August 2nd. All of them are under co-ops, so you have to do a resolution to memorialize it. That's it.
Anything for Mr. Zanga?
Yeah, Mr. Zanga, I have a couple of questions for you. So I was looking over the budget, and I want to thank you for taking the time to answer my email very promptly. This may be for you or the Budget Committee members. So looking at the BA salary, you know, the fiscal year runs July 1st to June 30th, correct?
No, we're calendar year.
Okay, so you're doing January. Okay. So with the current salary that is listed, is that going to be problematic for us when it comes time to getting a new BA? With Mr. Landenski's contract up December 31st, we budgeted $62,242. There's no professional that's going to do that job under a full year for that salary.
Part-time physician.
That's not my call. I mean, I don't get involved in that. I budget for what is there for a position.
So I guess for the Budget Committee, what's the thought process?
It's for this year.
Yeah.
It's for this year. Come January, that's for next year. That's when you would budget for anybody new, if we decide to hire somebody new.
Yeah, I have a question then. So instead of us, I understand the concept of all professionals, you know, they come up to an expiration on December 31st, but wouldn't it be, I guess you could say, I guess you're actually pre-planning, that you would go out and look for, what we call business administrator, like you would actually put out an advertisement, let's say, for the month of September, and then you'd interview for the month of October, where if the council agreed, you would bring them on probably sometime in the middle of November into December, so get them up to speed for January 1st. Wouldn't that make logical sense? Or would you say you would wait till January 1st to actually hire somebody?
Well, I would think that we should discuss whether or not, what the future of the business administrator is.
You haven't brought it up yet.
You know, that'll probably have to be done in closed session, and we can discuss same at that time.
I get it, okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Yep, that's it.
Anyone else for Mr. Zanga? Thank you, Mr. Zanga.
Good night.
Good night.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Soares for our DPW?
Yes, Mayor. This past Saturday, we replaced a hydrant on William. That was the last hydrant on the list, so all hydrants are back in full service. And also, Monday, September 6th, will be closed for the holiday, and Lady Ray will be opening the brush and brush pickup that day.
Any questions for Mr. Soares?
I do. Adriano, I see that we're going to renew our inter-local agreement with MCIA, and one of the issues, I guess, is that they're going to be raising the rates. Is that correct? Is there any type of thing that the borough itself can do with any of that yard waste? Like, I know we get a lot of brush. Do we chip it ourselves? Do we do any of that, or does that all go out?
No, we have a pile down there that people bring down on Saturdays, and then we chip.
We chip them ourselves?
We pay a contractor to come in, chip it up.
Didn't we have a chipper?
No, that wasn't ours.
No? Oh, I thought we did.
No, we have a tree chip, we have a chipper, a little tree chipper, but they come with a big hub grinder.
And they do all of it at once?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That contractor, is that part of the MCIA? No? Because I, I don't know if I'm misreading the way that, that whole thing came in our packet about the MCIA and what they do with our yard waste and all of that. I thought that the brush was something that goes to them.
It does, on Mondays. This is some separate, like, they bring in, you know, branches on the Saturday, people come over back there, you know, creates that big pile.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this, the MCIA is just for what we pick up from yard waste?
Yeah.
So the Saturday one is separate from this? Okay. Good to know. And then I see we're buying the dump truck. How many of our employees have CDLs?
A good amount, probably. Third.
Okay. Good to know. Okay. That was my only questions.
Okay. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Since our last meeting on August the 2nd, we've had some applications for mercantile licensing. On August 6th, Alley Cakes Custom Cake Shop came in. That is pending on October, I keep saying October, on August 12th. Manzo Motorsports Customs Automobile Upholstery Company, they were approved on August 16th. On August 16th, Lens Digital, an e-commerce platform, they were approved on the 20th. And Paradise Flyers Distributors LLC, they came in on the 18th, and they are still pending. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Our attorney Wyatt?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Landenski?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two issues. Please take a look at 243, Support Township of East Brunswick to file a petition of intervention for the BPU. What this is, Middlesex Water has applied to the BPU for a 36% increase, and as per our contract, this would be passed on to the Borough of South River. East Brunswick is appealing it, and this is just a petition in support of their actions to appeal it and reduce that amount of increase, because they would have to, of course, pay it, too, so. The other thing is, weather permitting, you will notice tomorrow at the Willow Avenue Substation, you'll be seeing temporary fencing going up. That is the start of the battery storage project, which the grading will be following in the next couple of days. That's all.
That's very good. Anything for Mr. Landenski?
I do, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to ask, with the water usage that we get from East Brunswick, what are we using right now? How much percentage are we getting from East Brunswick?
Well, are we getting, we're using around between 7 and 750,000 gallons a day.
Is that like 50% or how?
50% of...
What we intake as a borough?
No. The borough right now is, we have a 50% maximum that we can pump, and depending on the weather, we use between a million and a million-two a day. We have, by contract, we pay East Brunswick to guarantee the supply of $850,000, 850,000 gallons a day. We do not use all of that. We use, as I said, between 7 and 750,000 a day.
Okay. I was just curious, since the well, since we're still down a well, what the percentage of East Brunswick was, because for a while, we were using 100% from East Brunswick.
That's correct. We're allowed to use 50% of our well water.
Okay.
And with the wells that we have now, we are using 300,000, 400,000 gallons a day, depending on usage. When, of course, well two goes on, we'll get more to that 50% number, and we may talk to East Brunswick about lowering our minimum of 850,000 a day.
We've got to provide all these new developments for water, too, so we have to make sure. Because once you go below, each one's not going to give it back to you.
Okay.
So once we get some of that, so we have to see how much water is needed for all this new development also. this new development also. So we might want to keep it at 850, that's something we'll discuss.
Yes.
Okay. And then I just want to say, I received my water bill this week. The memos that go on it, I don't know who's in charge of that, but one of the Board of Health memos that's on there, it still says to contact Debbie Jones, so you might want to switch that, just for, and the extension, I think, is probably old, too, because it's not the five. And then my other question was... I lost it. Oh, TV 35, so I have a question. I don't know if this goes for you, Mr. Landensky, or for the lawyer. Will we, in the future, with TV 35, I know we have a contract with what we use with Telview, but could we stream some of our stuff on YouTube as well? I know the Board of Education, they stream their meetings. I'm not saying our meetings to be on YouTube, but like, maybe other certain things that we do, if we could have a YouTube channel. I don't know if it's legal for municipalities, but I know the Board of Education does that for their meetings, so I was curious to know if that's something we're allowed to do as well.
I don't see why we wouldn't, but that's definitely something I can look into.
Okay. So you don't see, like, an issue? Just because I know, like...
Not off the top of my head, but that would be something that I could look into, just to give you a more definitive answer.
Because I know now, this year, working with TV 35, I know its storage and certain things that we can store, if that was something that we could just, I mean, that'll be forever kind of thing, so. That's all I have.
Gee, I would be forever? Okay.
Forever.
Thank you.
Yes, forever.
Moving on to our governing body comments concerning liaison matters and things, Mrs. Ballas.
Just a couple of things. The planning for the time capsule opening is set for Sunday, September 26th, between 12:00 and 3:00 in front of the War Memorial Building, COVID allowed, so hopefully, I'm looking forward to seeing what is in there from that many years ago. Also, school will be opening on Wednesday, September 8th. As we all know, masks are mandated by the governor, so be prepared, parents and children alike. I wish, I hope that everybody's careful. We'll have a lot of kids on the road, walking the town then, and I wish them all a successful and a safe school year, and hopefully, they can get through it all in the classroom.
September 9th.
Is it the 9th? I thought it was the Wednesday or the Thursday?
I got...
Teachers go the 8th, students go the 9th?
My letter said the 9th.
Okay, so the teachers are in there the 8th, so there'll be more traffic up by the schools either way. So let's hope they can get through the school year inside. I know the parents look forward to kids going back, as well as the kids, they really need that socialization. And on the same track, and I have to do my sports, South River has its first home football game this week, 12 noon against South Plainfield. Note that it's 12 noon, not 1 o'clock, as always. I look forward to getting to some games this year, as we couldn't go last year, because it was pretty much just family and close friends. So I hope to see everybody out there. You root on the football team, the cheerleaders, the band, the coaches, and let's hope for a successful season. And that's it.
Mr. Seola?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, we completed our hydrants replacement. Thank you to the Water Department. It's been a long time coming. Our electric maintenance substation has been completed. They're doing normal routine maintenance now, trimming trees, keeping everything away from the wires. And with that, as Mr. Zanga had said originally, on our consent resolution today, we are purchasing vehicles and equipment. The vehicles that we're purchasing are replacing 1997s and 2003 vehicles. Again, past administration has neglected to keep our fleet updated, so that's why this year, we are buying lots of vehicles to keep everything going and keep the residents and the infrastructure moving. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for reminding me, because around in my neighborhood, we have the new big white garbage truck, and it comes so quietly. The old one, I could hear a block away. It's, oh, I gotta get my garbage out, I gotta make sure I put it out tonight, which I do put it out tonight, as opposed to some people who put it out in the morning on the day before. People put it out at night.
Or Sunday.
Yes, putting it out, you know, two days beforehand. I mean, you know, keep South River beautiful. Before I forget, Mr. Gindy, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please.
Carson Rec, fireworks will be this Thursday night at Denny Stadium from 6:00 to 9:00, which is going to be the vendors, which is going to be held in the parking lot of Denny Stadium, and then the fireworks will take off. The only rule that we have to follow, which is from the Board of Education, is no one, by any means, no one is allowed on the track. The track was put under construction back in July. They're finishing it up. No one is allowed to walk on the track. As for the Planning Board, our next meeting will be on September 21st, and the next Learning Board meeting happens to be tomorrow, which is going to be on Zoom. I'm sure Art Landensky, the Business Administrator, will have the information for you. And that's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
The library has not, they're off for the month of August. We did have a public safety meeting, and I'll let Mr. Gorchinsky as the liaison talk about that, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Gorchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things, like Councilman Seola had mentioned, that the fire hydrants are all operable now, and our purchase of new equipment and everything is well overdue to replace some of the broken-down things that we do have. Also, that, let's see. Oh, gosh. Had a brain freeze for a second. We're, have taken a step to put more stop signs in town, which is going to hopefully eliminate a little more problems as far as some of the raceways that are throughout town, especially, you know, with schoolchildren going back, because some of the, I've had a few complaints from a couple of the residents, too, that although the speed limit is 25 miles an hour in town, some people are just fudging it a little bit and doubling it. So we're on our way, at least we have one four-way stop sign, which will hopefully slow down the traffic a bit and make things a little bit safer for our children. With that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Human Relations Commission, I just want to let everybody know that we have been confirmed that we will have another flag raising September 7th, that's Tuesday, at 6:30 PM. That will be the Brazilian flag raising. I know it will be after Labor Day, so if anybody's back or in town, it'll be something small, but it'll be the first time the Brazilian community raises their flag, so if you can attend, it would be great.
What time is that again?
6:30. What else? Our Board of Health meeting I had last week, there's some things getting started. It is sad to say that we will not have the Frost the Pumpkin Race this year again. There just wasn't enough time or not enough certainty of how things will be going in the future, so we have decided to put that again, one more year on hold. They will have a painting party at the RMR on October 12th. If anybody's interested or would like tickets to our painting party, please contact me, or you can also call Michelle at 48 Washington. We still have a few tickets left, but we'd like to know as soon as possible. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, and I'll report later on. Moving on with the agenda, public comments. Please give your name and address. You have 10 minutes to speak and ask any questions concerning matters great and small in South River on first call, second call, third call.
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. The consent resolutions, Madam Clerk?
Where's Resolution 202101 authorizes the Borough Council utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in hall as if the same were individually acted upon. Resolutions 223, except August 2nd, regular meeting minutes. 224, except August 9th, special council minutes. 225, authorize property tax refund. 226, authorize August 2021, South River Board of Ed requisition. 227, authorize September 2021, South River Board of Ed requisition. 228, authorize renewal of inter-local agreement with Middlesex County Improvement Authority for yard waste recycling. 229, authorize liquor license person, person transfer from Vida Incorporated to Daisy Liquors Incorporated. 230, authorize August 23rd, utility refunds. 231, approve a special event permit for the Portuguese Club's outdoor fundraiser on October 3rd. 232, appoint Nicholas Swineford as police officer to the Borough South River PD. 233, appoint Brian Presti as police officer to the Borough of South River PD. 234, authorize permanent status of police officer Mark Kukota. 235, authorize permanent status to police officer Kyle Stevens. 236, appoint Giovanni Soydam, Suydam, as full-time school crossing guard. 236A, appoint Ira Schlossfeld as a full-time school crossing guard. 237, authorize purchase of lawn mowers, lawn mowers for the Department of Public Works under New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System contract. 238, authorize a purchase of two pickup trucks for the Department of Public Works under state contract. 239, authorize a purchase of a dump truck under national cooperative purchasing contract. 240, authorize a purchase of a sanitation truck under national cooperative purchasing contract. 241, authorize the 2021, 2022 ABC renewals for South River Spirits and More and Michael J. Barry. 242, appoint Alexander Pogliesi as Class III Special Lawn Enforcement Officer. 243, support the township of East Brunswick to file petition of intervention for BPU docket WR 21050813. 244, authorize the bills and claims list. And 245, approve a special event permit for Redeemer Presbyterian Church Corn Festival on August 28th.
Your pleasure on the resolutions.
Approve the resolution, please.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy to approve, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Council President Seola?
Yes, with the abstention from 245, following 21-01987, 01986, 01989, 01988, 01714, 01763, 01990, and 00862.
Thank you. Councilman Gindy?
Yes, with the abstention from bills, 245, 21-0197, 01986, 01989, 01988, 01763, and 00862.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mara?
Yes, with an abstention on 231.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes, with the abstention on 231.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no resolutions to be read separately under new business, therefore, we'll go to the governing body comments. Councilwoman Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate the two new officers that we'll be having, along with the two crossing guards. I'm glad we were able to find them. I would also say, Mr. Landensky, you had mentioned that we were having the beginning of our battery project. Now, I know I came back on this year, so I'm not really aware of what went forward with that. Is there any way I can get, or the public could get, any type of information on what we went ahead with? Because I don't believe I was, I guess, on when that happened? Just to get an idea of how it will be going forward, or what are the steps that we'll be having for it to begin?
Sure. We can put something on the Borough website showing the site and what's going on the site.
Okay. All right. Besides that, I would just say, you know, school's about to start. I hope everybody enjoyed the summer. Like Ms. Ballas said, everybody's excited to get back to school. I know my kids are, school shopping, and all the fun stuff that comes with that. I also want to thank the volunteers at the Food Bank who were able to do a school drive for some of the kids that aren't as fortunate to be able to get their school supplies. I know that went very well. I know one of our Baptist church also did a school drive, and it's great to see all of these helping hands get together, especially for kids, because to see a smile on a kid's face because she got a new book bag or a new lunchbox is invaluable to anyone, so thank you, everybody who spent the time and volunteered and was able to donate any of those items to our food bank, as well as some of the churches. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Gorchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police, fire, and Robert Wood Johnson, for the services that they provide to the borough. We're on our way as far as some of the stop signs being installed in the town, which is a good thing, because, like I said, it'll help slow down some of the traffic, especially around the school area and some of the longer stretches on the roads that are in town. Also, our thanks to the Water Department for the work that they did on Saturday, and with replacing that hydrant. I know it wasn't an easy task, especially down there, too. I saw the water coming into the hole as they were digging, and we had quite a bit of rain, so we had quite a bit of flooding and some problems throughout town. I'm sure everybody's basement might have gotten a little bit of water at one time or another. And with that, we got our children coming back, going to school. Be aware of that. Our end-of-summer festival's coming up, which we'll be able to get together and hopefully have a nice night and everything like that, too, and there won't be any rain. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
Good evening, everyone. All right, so as Councilman Gindy mentioned in his council comments, we have the fireworks this upcoming Thursday. Keisha has done a great job planning and getting everything ready. Make sure you come out. We will have some town vendors there, shop local. I know, Councilwoman Mara, you're big on that, you know, so please come out, support local businesses. We do have a couple that will be there. For fall recreation, please make sure you sign up your kids. It's very important that we get them out. Please follow up with LaKeisha if you have any questions. We do have a plethora of different sports going on, and as Councilwoman Mara and Councilman Gorchinsky mentioned, we have schools that are going to be starting up. Please make sure you drive carefully, because we are a walking town, so we will see a bunch of happy children going to school, so, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gindy?
Thank you. I want to welcome Brian Presti and Nicholas Swineford, both police officers, coming back to South River. But what you don't know is that these two police officers were specials at one time for this town. This is how much they like our town. They got hired at different other townships and found their way back here, so I welcome them to our police force. Fireworks, just to repeat, this Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00 at Denny Stadium. No one's allowed to walk on the track. Please comply by that. I mean, they did a beautiful work job putting it together, so we want to keep it as neat as we can. This was an idea that I thought about in the last meeting, Drew Peterson, our Hall of Famer. This is just an idea to the council. Why don't we name a road after him? So just to give us some thought. I know there's quite a few roads around here that's been named after other people. Drew Peterson would be a great addition to our town. I'm happy to announce, on September 30th, Thursday night, from 5:00 to 9:00, right here on Main Street, the car show is coming back. The Municipal Alliance will be hosting it. There will be lots of cars. There'll be quite a few vendors for food. There'll be a DJ, and there'll be trophies. So come out, support your local businesses as well, check out the cars, and have a great night. And last, I don't know if anybody knew this, but the Board of Health will be holding their second clinic, vaccination, I should say, which is hosted by the Middlesex County on Wednesday from 9:00 to 10:00. So if anybody's looking to get a vaccination, come down and get vaccinated. That's all I have.
Where is that going to be?
That is at the Board of Health.
The Board of Health?
Food Bank.
At where?
The building on Jackson.
Food Bank, yeah.
At the Food Bank.
Yeah, the building on Jackson.
Yeah, they had one there before, and from what I gather, was somewhat successful, so, okay. Thank you, at least this time we know about it ahead of time. Thank you, Mr. Gindy, Mr. Seola.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As everybody's saying, please be aware of the children. The school is starting, and there's going to be a lot of children walking around. I'd like to thank our first responders for what they do, day in and day out, all hours of the day and night. of the day and night. Congratulate our new officers. Welcome to, well, welcome back to our town. And I'd like to also congratulate our officers that have reached permanent status now. They've been here for a year and fulfilled all their duties to make them permanent. And also our new crossing guards. Congratulations there. I have an announcement also for September 11th. We all know the significance of that date. The South River Fire Department's Exempt Firemen's Association, on the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks, will conduct a dedication, a 9/11 monument, with a section of the World Trade Center recovered from Tower 7. The sculptor has been designed and built by Blaise Batko, a renowned sculptor that was a graduate of South River High School. The event is going to be held Saturday, September 11th, at 8:30 AM sharp at Fire Headquarters on Jackson Street and Rarleton Avenue. It's a uniformed event for the members. They'll unveil the monument and conduct a moment of silence at 8:46 AM to commemorate the start of the attacks on the World Trade Center. The public is welcome to join us. Please note, the event will be conducted rain or shine. It's an outdoor event with no seating, and parking is limited. For further information, please call Chairman Paul Migott at 732-586-1923. He'll be able to give you any additional information. So if you're planning on attending the event, please be there prior to the 8:30, because it will start sharp, because at 8:46 is when the first plane hit the Trade Center. So again, please come out. It's going to be a great day for the Fire Department. And then we will have our annual dedication and presentation at 6:30. 6:30 at Daily's Pond. All right? That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
Yeah, I, I would just like to thank all of Borough workers, police, and first responders. I'm sure they had a very busy weekend. I was sent quite a few pictures of people's basements that got flooded. I fortunately only had a little trickle. I, I know they've, they've cleaned up, and I, I'm glad everybody was safe and there were no injuries or anything. I know it's hard to clean up, and I know it's so hard to throw things away that you had stored maybe in your basement or whatever, that you no longer can salvage, but I'm glad everybody was safe. We do not have a meeting now until.
13th.
After Labor Day. Correct? So I wish everyone a very happy Labor Day, and I look forward to seeing everyone Thursday for the end of year fireworks, and maybe at the football game on Saturday. Yes, I'll be there. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just end by welcoming our two new police officers and crossing guards. Welcome to South River. People have talked about not having fireworks. Well, lo and behold, we are having fireworks this Thursday, so please enjoy. Happy Labor Day. There'll be a holiday coming up there, the first Monday of the September. So enjoy. And of course, right after that, be careful. The children will be out there, and they probably are not watching where the cars are. You have to watch where they are. So be careful about that. The solemn occasions, we're going to have two ceremonies. In fact, it is the 20th year, hard to imagine, anniversary. It's been 20 years. Seems like not too long ago. September the 11th, 8:30 in the morning and 6:30 at night. So if you can't make one, make the other, or make both. They are usually very moving ceremony, and I'm sure that one at 8:30 will also be. Thank you, Mr. Gindy, for attending by telephone. It was good to have you there. And enjoy yourself up there in New York.